Hi, welcome to an edition of One Voice at a Time. It's election season again in Londonderry and we are about to go to the voting to elect our new town councilors. This year, we have four people running for two offices. So, we're going to be doing a half an hour or up to a half an hour with each one of them and they're going to tell you who they are, why they're running, what they think is important and hopefully what they hope to accomplish while they're a town councillor. So, we're doing this show with Al Seibek. Al, welcome to my show.
Thank you.
Normally, Al is behind the scenes directing shows for me.
Yes, I am.
So, Al, tell us, how long have you been in Londonderry?
Forty-six years.
Wow.
I came here and we had 6,000 people.
My goodness. And what have you been doing since you got here?
Well, I moved here when I was going to graduate school and Chet Eaton got me involved in civil defense.
Okay.
Then, I joined the volunteer fire department. Two years after I did that, I went on full-time. My total service is 31 years on the fire department, 29 full-time, and I retired as chief. The other things that have happened to me along the way in Londonderry
Yes.
Is I served a term on the Conservation Commission, the IT Committee. We used to have a Water Commission, whose job was to franchise the town. I wound up as chairman of that. I've also served as ex-officio on the Planning Board, an alternate on the Planning Board, and now, I'm a full member on the Planning Board. And I had the privilege, last year, at deliberative session, of being named 2015 Citizen of the Year.
Good for you.
So, I have a long history volunteering
You've been around a long time.
For the town and I've been around, and a lot of my anecdotal knowledge, like yours, has already been useful.
Right, yeah. It sort of gives you like that historical perspective on what's happening, right?
And sometimes, that historical perspective, especially in planning, really comes in handy.
I've found that on just about any committee. If you've got somebody on there that has some history, it can be very helpful.
Yes, it is very helpful.
Very helpful. So, what made you decide to run for town council?
Well, people have been after me for years to run for council. They know I don't have an agenda. I have no conflicts. I'm fair. So, after I'd been considering that for a few years, I decided that now is the time for me to volunteer some more and do a good job as town councillor.
Okay, all right. So, what do you think's important that's going on in town right now?
Would you like to start?
Well, you pick your show here.
I will pick.
Remember, it's One Voice at a Time, so you get to talk.
I know, I love that One Voice at a Time. Several things. Actually, number one is multifamily development.
Okay.
We've had a lot of that recently. It is particularly put a strain on the school district. Future ones will also put a strain on the school district. They were at some point below on their level of people they had. Now, they're gradually going to go up.
Right.
All right?
The school district, yeah.
That is one thing. And when more people move in, you're going to have more infrastructure. We've had some, I said, the living places come in. That's put more of service requirement for ambulance service and everything. So, as the town grows, now, we're going to have the commons.
Up at Woodmont.
And Phase One, right? Phase One's been approved. So, that will build out. Fortunately, we have a development agreement with that.
Okay.
So, it'll be tax-negative. So, that's good.
What happens to the kids that they bring in? Is that how it becomes tax-negative? They have to take care of
They have to pay us
That impact?
Yes, they have to pay us that impact.
Okay.
As you know, our impact fees are no longer used because they were abused and the court said you have to give the money back.
Right.
So, the council has no intention, that I know of, of bringing impact fees back.
Right.
Neither would I.
But, there's a contractual agreement as to how they
But, they sit down with the developer and they make a development agreement. In that, it's not an impact fee, but there's certain things the developer needs to do as part of that deal.
And it seems like it would make sense because it's individualized.
Yes, for each development.
Right, okay.
Right? So, that's one good way around the nightmare of the impact fees. The other thing I'm concerned with is, I've been hearing lately about the possibility that we need a light, traffic light, on Stanborn Road for the traffic there for the North School.
Yeah.
We know that with the new development proposed on Stonehenge
That's the workforce housing?
That's the 50% workforce housing, right? We know that the intersection of Stonehenge and 28 has been in failure. DOT knows it's been in failure. They have no plan to address that. So, we do have some traffic concerns with that. And the other thing that I am particularly concerned with is capital reserve.
Okay.
Over the years, and I'll give you an example. We're going to vote on Article 2 on March 14th. That's communications upgrade.
Yes.
That's been needed for about 30 years.
Yeah.
Okay? As Chief O'Brien explained, because people complained about, you know, the money, and originally, it was 4.2, so they're not going to get everything.
Yeah, yeah.
The thing is
It was 4.2 million, by the way.
4.2 and it got knocked down to 2.8. So, here's the thing, is in 2007, as Chief O'Brien said, that was the last time they had capital reserve communications. What's happened over the years, a few years ago on the Planning Board, I asked, "What about capital reserve for fire equipment, fire apparatus? Well, the council hasn't funded that for a couple of years."
Yeah.
What they've done is, and I have to give the council credit for one thing, they've kept a stable tax rate.
Okay.
This, one of the reasons is because they've eliminated some of these things for a couple of years. Problem is, they eliminated those capital reserves for fire equipment and just replacing the tower was going to be 1.7 million.
Okay.
So, there would not have been capital reserve for that. So, I would like to see Article 2 pass because this is a life-safety issue, not only for responders, but also for the general public.
Yeah.
Next year, I would also like to see a capital reserve started for communications upgrades.
When we need it again.
When we need it again, the whole thing. I started the fire department capital reserves back in the 90s.
Yeah.
Okay? Because we would bond a fire truck for 20 years
I remember, yeah.
That would only last 15 and we were still paying five years later. So, this is the same thing. You want to buy something, all right?
Yeah.
You set aside so much a month until you have what you have
Save a little, yeah.
And you pay for it cash.
Yeah.
What does that do for you? You don't have to bond. You don't have to pay attorney's fees for bonding. You don't have to pay the cost of bonding and you certainly don't have to pay the interest.
Right.
So, capital reserve
You've got to save in the long run.
Capital reserve is definitely the answer.
Right.
Okay? There are a number of other warrant articles on there. And someone would say, "Well, why this year are we not going to have the low tax rate that we had last year?" You can have a low tax rate for a certain number of years
And then, you've got to catch up.
Guess what? Things catch up.
Yeah.
All right? Things you need that you put off, eventually, you catch up with.
Yeah.
Okay? I was glad to see, for two years in a row, on the Planning Board, when we discussed the capital improvement plan, I was very much in favor of the addition to the seniors' center. And finally, it got done.
It did, yeah.
You know?
I think it's beautiful, by the way.
I've been in there. It's very beautiful. I'm glad we finally gave the seniors something after all these years.
And they appreciate it.
And they do appreciate it. And then, when it came to the CIP discussions with the Planning Board on the school district, this is probably not going to make me the most popular person in the world.
I don't think you've ever worried about that.
But, I don't. I don't mind speaking my piece. The thing that I was pretty concerned with was all their capital improvement projects. You know, we may need a new school. Well, guess what? If the enrollment gets up there, so, I spoke in favor of their capital improvement projects. They weren't all going to be done the next year.
Right.
Right? They'd be done sooner or later. In my opinion, one of the biggest needs they have immediately is getting rid of the school district office.
Oh.
That, I don't even want a word to describe.
I was on the school board in the 80s and it was like canned sardines then.
And it's worse now.
Oh, it's much worse.
Much worse now.
I've been in there, yeah. It's much, much worse.
It's not really a good working environment.
No, no.
You know? So, I would like to see, maybe even next year, I wouldn't mind seeing them come up with a plan to build it, whether they come up with the architectural work and engineering than the next year, you know?
To get started on that.
And people would say, "Well, why are you talking about the school?" Well, guess what? The town and the school go together. We live here
We pay the taxes.
We pay a total tax bill, right?
Yeah.
So, yes, as a councillor, you should be concerned about the school district as well because if they have a greater need and you have a lesser need, you can adjust, maybe to cover part of what their need is, as well.
Isn't that sort of what the premise behind having a CIP was all about?
It is.
Was to prioritize based on actual need versus town, having town versus school or the other way around? Okay.
And the origin of the CIP is, you know, you had to have a master plan. And way back when, you couldn't charge impact fees unless you had a master plan and you had
Yes, yeah, I remember that too.
The capital improvement plan.
Yeah.
So, it's a good thing that we keep the capital improvement plan, for sure. And I would like to see the town and the school maybe cooperate a little more than they have. That would be a goal that, you know, I would like to further, better relations
Well, anytime the communications
Or good relations, yes.
Anytime the communications is improved, that's good for everybody.
Good relations, you know? Good relations are good for everybody if we can work together to do something with the tax rate, but address the needs. And as time goes on, if we don't plan properly, we're going to have some needs that are just going to pop up that we're going to have to deal with right away. I don't like doing that. I like being able to, you know, anticipate
Be proactive versus reactive.
Be proactive, plan years out, especially for capital projects.
Makes sense.
You look at one of the needs we have now and we're going to be voting on the engineering fees, like 35,000, for the engineering study to expand Central Fire Station. Okay? Well, right now, they really can't fit everything in that they have, right? Of course, this is one of the things, the demand has skyrocketed.
Yeah.
They did 3,600 calls last year. The most, I think, I had when I was the fire chief were like 2,200, so it's gone up. A lot of those are EMS calls, all right? They've done a marvelous job with Doug Smith's help. Instead of buying the tower for 1.7 million, we have a new quint, which is a shorter-based 100-foot ladder.
Okay.
That's over there now. A tanker, which we sorely needed, getting back to those people that passed on Hemlock Street, we finally have a tanker
Yeah.
And we have a new ambulance.
Yeah.
Okay? For less money because now, they've gone to leasing instead of buying outright or borrowing.
And these are true safety things that you just can't
No. So, when somebody calls
You've got to go.
And lately now, since I monitor the fire department for several reasons, one of which is the communications upgrade, more frequently now, I'm hearing, "You're unreadable. I can't hear you." Not a very good thing.
You know, I was, I don't know how this relates, but I had to call for emergency services last week and my emergency button would not connect anywhere because I'm in a dead zone. And my cellphone emergency button would not connect me.
Not a good thing.
Scary.
No.
Kind of scary.
What people don't realize with this, and I'll plug Article 2 for a number of reasons, the police department, they have a digital system. It's just like your cellphone. You either have a signal or you don't. So, it applies to all your departments, but you get a call, somebody broke into your house. One gets there, okay? He may not even be able to sign off in the cruiser, much less go in and find out he needs help. His portable won't get back.
Yeah.
All right? It's the same thing. You get a section of town where you have a bad accident and they need to call for a helicopter, DART, or something like that, can't get back, you know? And people have to understand, that is a true emergency. Plus, one of the things that came out with the study of 9/11 in New York was that none of the public safety services could communicate with each other.
I remember that, yes.
That's called interoperability. A lot of federal money came out
Yeah.
After that.
Yeah.
To foster that, so fire, police, and public works or what, could talk to one another. Okay? Especially in some of the emergencies, the ice storms we've had and things like that.
Yeah.
All right? So, part of that communications upgrade is for the police department as well. Plus, the fire department now, as far as their expansion goes, we're now dispatching for Hampstead.
We are.
Which means they pay us.
Right.
If the warrant goes through in Pelham as of July 1st, we should be dispatching for Pelham. They are going to pay us.
Wow.
Because one of the things, you'll see taxes and you'll see budgets, you know? Big amounts of money and everything. What doesn't show is the revenue side.
Yeah.
It's not very well-made known, all right?
I wonder if we could do that?
I think in one of your shows, you could have
Revenue offset kind of feels, yeah.
You could have Kevin on on transparency in government and talk about the money that the town
Let me make a note of that.
Right? The money that the town brings in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Because if you balance that in some departments over what is spent
Yeah, and I think it does make a perceptual difference to people, yeah.
It definitely makes a perceptual difference, for sure. The other thing I'd like to see is, I remember years ago that the Board of Selectmen would have a cookout every summer for volunteers.
Yes.
You remember that?
I do remember that.
Nothing like that's happened in years.
No, and they used to also do something for their staff.
They still
And say, "We appreciate you."
I think they still have something they'll do for the staff, but they don't do anything for the volunteers.
Okay.
That's another thing that, I've already mentioned that to the town manager, you know? So, one of the things I didn't mention is the fact that I was town administrator for three months.
Oh, that's right, yes, he was.
Yes, I was, so
After we found him in the woods.
So, if you figure out
He was on vacation, that's why he was in the woods.
Yes, yeah, right? Yes, I was.
Just to be clear.
Yes, I was. So, yes, so, here's the thing with me. I was employed by the town. Even while I was employed by the town, I volunteered for the town, okay? Now that I no longer work for the town, I'm still volunteering for the town.
Yeah.
The nice thing about being the department head is I was totally familiar with the budget process
Yes.
And how town government works, which being a town councillor is a big asset.
Absolutely.
Okay? I know the system from both sides now.
So, there's no learning curve there.
So, there's no learning curve there.
You can jump right in.
I'm totally familiar with how town government works.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, being that town administrator for three months, I have a great deal of sympathy for anyone that becomes a town administrator or a town manager. It is not an easy job.
No, it's not.
So
It's not. I haven't been one and I know it's not, yeah.
Yes, you do. So, anyway, the thing is, I was asked a question, "Well, why are you the best person for the job?" And my answer is simple and it's the same one I gave the Londonderry Times. Who's going to decide whether I'm the best person for the job? It's not I.
No.
It's going to be the voters on March 14th. And whatever they decide, I am totally comfortable with because it's the one chance they get to make
Have their say.
To have a say in town government. I mean, you vote in a presidential election. You vote for state rep, state senate and everything else like that, but that's really not local and that doesn't affect your tax rate. What does is, what you vote by ballot on March 14th.
Right.
So, I always say, even with my show, no matter what you do, please go out and vote. You know?
Yeah, it's been, and I've said this many, many times and I'm going to say it again, someone suggested a long time ago that, at least in Londonderry, when you vote, you should get a card when you come out of the booth. And the card would say something to the effect that, "I voted so I can complain." Okay? If you didn't vote and you didn't take part, you really can't complain. And especially here. I mean, you're talking about communications and I just want to ask you something, okay?
Sure.
We talked about the police and the fire in the school district and communicating with the employees and as a town manager and all of that. How would you be as far as like people contacting you? How would you feel about people contacting you directly?
I have no
Will you be responsive to that?
I have no problem. It's the only way you'll know. And the thing is, I respect people that want to get involved, you know? Few do, but you have to respect the ones that do.
The ones that show up, yeah.
It's just like, the four of us that are running for town council, all right? I respect anyone that runs for elective office.
Mm-hmm.
You know? They're putting themselves out there.
And you're taking on a lot.
And you're taking on a lot, so you have to respect anyone that goes for, anyone that runs for the Budget Committee, trustee of trust funds, anything like that. You have to give them the respect too because they are ready to step up to the plate.
They actually put themselves out there.
They put themselves out there, right?
And they're going to do the work.
And they don't know whether they're going to win or they lose.
Mm-hmm.
All right? And yet, a lot of them still volunteer on, you know? You had talked about me being in the little room over there and
Oh, yeah, he's a volunteer here with the Londonderry Access Center.
And I've been here for over 10 years volunteering here and
Yes, you have, yeah.
And no matter what, I'm still going to be a volunteer here.
That's good to know.
It is because we need people.
Yes.
You know? We're sure to help here and we could use, so
We really need volunteers in a lot of places
Yes, we do.
Around town government.
Yes, we do.
And, so, you know, people should step up and say, "Well, this is what I'm interested in. What can I do?"
Exactly right.
Yeah.
They really should.
Yeah. And we'd be happy to have them here, yeah.
We would definitely, we need some camera operators, some audio people. We could use some more directors.
Well, this, we're supposed to be pitching you, not the access center, but yeah.
Well, I take every opportunity to pitch all of town government, so, yeah.
I kind of do the same thing. It's hard to shop in a hurry.
And when you were director here, you pitched the volunteer thing too.
All the time, yeah, yeah.
You know?
Volunteers are very much appreciated here. They always have been.
Yes, they are.
And it's all about the free speech. And I think that's a concept that I'm hoping that town councillors grasp and, you know, make their own because the free speech part of this whole government is just so important. So, I just asked you, would you be open to people contacting you?
Sure.
And I hope that you would feel the same if people show up at a meeting and want to express their opinion.
I would like to see the plates packed, to be honest with you.
Regardless of how controversial.
No, it would be nice to have every seat filled there.
Yeah.
There's no question about that, you know?
Maybe you could hold, not our regular town meetings, maybe you could hold like government town meetings the way some of the federal candidates are doing, or not candidates, but senators and representatives.
Well, the minute you had three or more councillors together
Yeah.
It is now a meeting
Oh, yeah.
And you know it has to be
Oh, yeah, no, just one at a time.
Oh, one at a time.
Oh, yeah, one at a time, yeah.
Realizing that no one councillor can speak
For the rest.
For the rest.
Exactly.
And the way our government is set up here, no councillor can interfere with the operation day-to-day of any department. That comes under the town manager, okay?
It's really important.
Well, it's really important to realize that. You are not allowed to interfere in the day-to-day operations. That comes under the town manager by charter.
And it really, what's the word? It impedes the work of the department
Yes.
When that happens.
Yes.
That did happen to me at one point in time. We had a town council that was constantly trying to interfere in my department. And it was very difficult because you've got five of them, like all got a different opinion.
True.
So, sorry, I'm going to talk to my town manager.
But, we're lucky now. We have a great town manager.
We do. He's very good about communications.
Our finance director is probably the best one we ever had.
Terrific. Good to know.
He is taking care of so many issues for us. Again, I'm not plugging me. I'm plugging them, you know? But, it would be a pleasure to work for them and with them.
Yeah.
You know, so
Well, it sounds good. So, how would you, kind of like, if you're ready to sum up? Are you ready to sum up here, you think? You've got some more things that you want to talk?
Do I need to sum up?
You don't have to. You've got a few more minutes.
The other thing I would just like to say, since I do have a few more minutes
You do, go for it.
Is, check the ballot. Check the warrant articles.
Yes.
Make your decision before you go in on which ones you will vote yes for
Yeah.
Which ones you will vote no for.
Yeah. A lot of times, what I'll do is just cut it out of the paper and kind of spill it out at home and take it with me.
You have the ability to watch the meetings.
Just don't leave it in the booth.
Right. You have the ability, we have streaming here, you can watch the meetings and see. You can watch the deliberative session. You can watch a deliberative session.
Yeah, all of them.
And all the warrant articles are discussed there, all right? You're an informed voter if you go in and you know what one is for.
Yeah. And if you don't think you got enough information out of the deliberative session, you can go back to the corresponding town council meeting where that was discussed and see what went into that decision to put that on the warrant.
Right, and it will make life a lot easier for you. And it would give due diligence to especially people that do petition articles.
Yes.
You know, they deserve your consideration too, because they put themselves out there as well.
And sometimes it's for the benefit of the town, and sometimes it's for their particular neighborhood as being impacted by something, so.
So, be an informed voter, that's my big thing.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
So, what, and now, we're going to sum up then, okay? So, is there something in particular, you've talked about a lot of things, and you seem to have concentrated on communication.
Yep.
Is there something in particular that you would like to stress that you're planning on having as a goal?
Well, one of the things that I had mentioned before that we definitely have to keep an eye on is the development.
Yes.
Okay? As costs go up, if we have more industrial development to offset the costs, okay? So, it's, you know, two things. One, you have the need, the other, you can have the industrial development to provide the revenue, all right?
So, the economic development versus the housing development?
Right, a balance, if you can do a balance, that's pretty important.
Okay.
The other thing people have to realize is that, again, this is not going to make me very popular, but the ZBA and the planning board, we can't just say no to a lot of things because it's our personal opinion. We are governed by the law.
Right.
All right? A lot of people don't understand, we are governed by law. If you meet our standards, we can't turn you down, really.
Right.
Especially in the ZBA, they're quasi-judicial. So, they have their five things, you meet those five things, you get your variance. Personal opinion doesn't matter, okay? But, and a lot of people, I'll try and summarize quickly. A lot of people are upset with the Stonehenge development, okay? I asked for a five-year traffic from the PD, and there's been 83 accidents, okay? Both the developers' traffic expert and our own third-party reviewer have no problem with the traffic issues there, okay?
So, they feel that road can definitely handle the traffic that will be generated.
Personally, I don't, but that's just my personal
It's still hard for the people that the houses, going by their houses, it's law.
Under the ordinances we have today, if they came today, it would not be allowed to build there. But they went before the ZBA when we had a kind of, what I could say, a defective ordinance. And the ZBA gave them the variance to build there.
Okay, so we fixed that now, though, that particular issue?
That has now been fixed.
No, 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 I don't mean we haven't fixed them, but going forward
Going forward.
Anybody who applied, it would be with the new ordinance.
In that particular situation, would be denied.
Okay.
So, that is one thing, that's a really big thing that we need to keep an eye on.
And some of these ordinances that you cope with are local, and some of them are state law.
Workforce housing is state law, okay? And that has an effect on what we do on the local level too. So, all these factors, and like I said, between the impacts on the town and the school, everything has to be taken into consideration. That's one thing that we all need to watch.
What about people who want to stop development?
Almost impossible unless you meet the standards of the growth ordinance.
Okay.
If you meet the standards of the growth ordinance, growth ordinance, which basically your service demand is really exceeded over what the development is. There are, I'm not going to list everything there, but
No, 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 but just
But yes, then you can put a growth ordinance, and we have had it before.
But it has to be triggered by certain circumstances.
It has to be triggered by certain circumstances, then you can have a growth ordinance.
Well, I think that we should probably start wrapping up here.
I think we should.
And you said you've been here for 46 years?